Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, relative to Bill 2022-0190. Would a clerk please read the title of the
Bill 190, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Building Under Title XI of the Code of Orphans is Certain Site Known as the Tito House Located at 1817 Fifth Avenue in 1818 Caldwell Street in Uptown in the Third Ward. The owners of the property are opposed to the nomination.
Thank you. For the record, we are joined by President Teresa Smith, as well as Councilwoman Erica Schlossberger, who is online. Other members may join us as they have time, excuse me. Our first order of business will be an introduction and comments by Sarah Quinn from the City's Planning Department, followed by a testimony from our registered speakers. Ms. Quinn, if you may, I'll take it over.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Tito House is located, as we said, at 1817 Fifth Avenue and 1818 Caldwell Street, contains two parcels and two buildings. The owners of the parcels are James A. McGuire and Sal and Irene Williams. The nomination was made by Dr. Brittany McDonald, and the date of nomination was October 1st, 2021. The dates of construction for the house is 1884 and for the garage located on the second parcel of 1922. The house at 1817 Fifth Avenue is a two-and-a-half story irregular plan building constructed on a continuous Ashler stone foundation clad by brick laden common bond. The house has a gabled roof with crossgables pierced by a chimney in the rear. 1818 Caldwell Street occupies a 2,889 square foot lot that was carved out of the original 1817 Fifth Avenue parcel. The building is a two-story building constructed on a concrete foundation. The building is finished by brick laden and eight-course common bond, and it has a flat roof. The parcel where the site is were owned until 1865 by an axe manufacturer named James and Maria Lippincott. Arnett McCracken and his wife Elizabeth appeared to have owned the property when the house at 1817 Fifth Avenue was built. In 1889, they sold it and sold it to a gentleman named John Gunst, who was a glass blower, and then he went into the hospitality business. Three months after Gunst's death, the Allegheny County Sheriff disposed of the property along with several other parcels that Gunst had owned. Between 1898 and 1912, several parties owned the house and a stable located at 1817 Fifth Avenue. Five years later, the house was again sold to a pair of Italian immigrants named Ralph Raphael and Rosa Tito. The Tito's got a $20,000 mortgage from Brady Building and Loan Association of Pittsburgh for their purchase. Frank and Rosa Tito were Italian immigrants, and they came to the United States in 1888 from southern Italy. For the first few years, they rented homes in the city. In the earliest surviving documents, Raphael identified himself as a laborer, and by the 1900, he was working as a street lamp lighter. The Tito's were among a wave of Italian immigrants who settled in Pittsburgh in the decades around the turn of the 20th century. Their move to Soho in the 1890s was part of a large-scale shift in Italian immigrants from other parts of the city to the Hill District and its margins clustered close in pre-immigration village life between 1896 and 1930. Raphael and Rosa Tito bought multiple properties on Gazem Hill in Alacquipa and Gazem Street, which extended family lived within one block of the original Tito home. Census, excuse me, Ralph and Rosa had eight children while living in Pittsburgh, five boys and three girls. Joseph, the oldest, was born in 1890, and Robert, the youngest, was born in 1905. Little material evidence survives to document Ralph Raphael and Rosa's lives, but Frank, we know, became a Pittsburgh police officer, and Joe continued to work in the streets selling vegetables. By 1920, Joe had married, and their couple was living on a rented home in Elsinore Place in South Oakland. The Tito Brothers began making headlines in 1922 for hauling and hijacking liquor. In December 1922, federal prohibition agents raided four Penn Avenue establishments, seizing more than 140 stills and other bootlegging paraphernalia, including trucks observed leaving the sites. Frank and Joe Tito were the people arrested. Joe subsequently petitioned the district court to return of his trucks that were seized. And there's quite a bit in the nomination about syndicated crime in Pittsburgh, and I think I'll skip over some of that today just for the sake of brevity, but as you know, council members, I provided you with the staff report and with the full nomination, so you can certainly go back and read on that more fully should you choose. What's interesting, though, is that after prohibition, the Tito Brothers decided to go the more legal route and invested in Latrobe Brewing. In December 1932, the Latrobe Bulletin reported Anthony Tito and Robert Zaffi bought the Pittsburgh Brewing Company assets in that city. Zaffi was an Italian immigrant who had lived in Westmoreland County for several decades. Zaffi had a specialization in grapes, but that didn't necessarily work very well for Pittsburgh, so they switched to the brewing. The Latrobe Brewery Company got its license in early 1934 and began producing and distributing legal beer. Anthony Tito was the company's president, Joe Tito its vice president, and Robert Tito its secretary. Frank Tito managed the company's wholesale beer distributorship, which was located in the brick garage at 1818 Caldwell Street. At first, the company brewed Latrobe Old German and Latrobe Pilsner beers. Then, in the spring of 1935, Frank Tito began advertising that the company had Latrobe Pilsner and Rolling Rock Ale for sale at 1818 Caldwell Street. So the March 1935 as marked the first time that Rolling Rock Beer was produced and sold, yet the US Patent and Trademark Office knows the first use in commerce in 1934. In 1947, a new modern apartment building at 5837 Darlington Road was completed, and Joe and Catherine Tito moved into a unit there, selling the 1817 Fifth Avenue to Joe's sister Anna for a nominal $1. The house at 1817 Fifth Avenue remained in the extended Tito family until 1973, after Joe's sister Anna died the year before. So I went through the nomination, and I pulled some specific criteria that the author feels, the author of the nomination feels meet the significance requirements under Title XI. The first one is the location of a site of significant prehistoric activity. This is in its association with the Rolling Rock Beer distributorship, first one in Pittsburgh, and its manager Frank Tito. The nominator also felt that the property was significant as its association with important person that contributed to history. Joe Tito is a figure that was widely recognized in the early crime history of Pittsburgh. There is also a partnership potentially with Gus Greenley. Thirdly, the property felt that, or the nominator felt that the third category is under significant architecture, and in my opinion, in my professional opinion, this is the most appropriate to list it under. The two buildings comprise a site that are eligible as part of Victorian architecture. I think that when you look at the Uptown neighborhood and you look at what's left in the Uptown neighborhood after all these years, really, this is the only remaining Victorian building still extant. There's nothing else like it, and for that reason, even though it's not the most high-style Victorian, maybe it's not the most well-designed Victorian, I definitely think that it adds character to the neighborhood. The nominator also felt that this building was significant under its association with important events. It is associated with an Italian immigrant family and its first-generation entrepreneurs, as well as Rolling Rock Beer. Finally, the property is the nominator felt the property is a, represents a familiar visual feature. It's certainly recognizable on Fifth Avenue. Nobody necessarily knows a lot about it, but they certainly recognize the building when they see it. And finally, the property does still maintain integrity, even though it's in poor condition. So that's what I have for you on the nomination report. I can tell you that the Historic Review Commission voted to provide a negative recommendation to City Council. What the Historic Review Commission uses to make their decisions are criteria specifically spelled out in Title XI, which are drawn from the National Park Service guidelines, and they tend to be pretty stringent. So the minutes for the hearing for the HRC were included in your packet, so you have those, you can read up on those as well. I can tell you that the Planning Commission, per Title XI, is required to consider neighborhood plans and those sorts of things when they make their recommendation to City Council. The Planning Commission voted to provide a positive recommendation, and they base that on the language related to the Eco Innovation District Plan, which said that the city placed a moratorium on demolition of existing buildings in the community. The new zoning proposed for Uptown recognizes the need to preserve these structures by requiring formal review and engineering study and providing incentives to preserve structures with new development by offering additional density. So Planning Commission doesn't have that stringent criteria to look at that the Historic Review Commission does, so I think that's why there have been several questions about the recommendations to you all, but as of right now, that's what I have for you, so.
Thank you. We've also been joined by our Planning Director, Ms. Karen Abrams. Was there anything you wanted to add, or you're good?
No, this is exactly, yeah, this is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our public testimony from the registered speakers. Once you recall, please give your full name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address City Council. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Brittany McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'm Dr. Brittany McDonald. Address is 1800 Fifth Avenue, number L12, Pittsburgh, PA, 15219. First off, I want to say good afternoon, City Council members. I am the Executive Director for Uptown Partners, and as the leader of Uptown Partners, it is my responsibility to put the best interest of the community first and foremost, followed by working to implement the city-adopted Eco Innovation District Plan. This is the community plan for Uptown that, simply put, focuses on healing the environment, supporting the needs of existing residents, and expanding job growth. The Eco Innovation District Plan calls for preservation and strengthening of the community and preserving the historic nature that makes Uptown so unique. The Tito House is the last single-family home of its kind in Uptown, and that was noted by Ms. Sarah Quinn. And unfortunately, this beautiful building that's right on Fifth Avenue has been left blighted and abandoned for decades, and in an effort to remediate that blight of 1817 Fifth Avenue, Uptown Partners filed a conservatorship petition back in 2019 under the leadership of the previous executive director. Now, to go back to two of the questions that were brought up during the Historic Review Commission hearing, were around what's best for the community and what was more important regarding this nomination, the actual buildings or the story behind it. So to address the first concern, as the resident, as the leader of the community-based organization and the nominator, I've been able to hear the voice of the community with respect to preservation and development, and we've received many letters of support from community members or legislators, including Senator Wayne Fontana, historic preservation experts, scholars, and descendants of the Tito Meccasizza family. And to address the second concern, both are important to this historic site, as the histories tells a story that is relevant to the culture of the neighborhood and its past times with respect to 1817 Fifth Avenue, and the story of local enterprise with respect to the first Rolling Rock Beer distributorship at 1818 Caldwell Street. I hope that, you know, City Council can appreciate the historic nature of the Tito Meccasizza House, from its compelling story to its architectural significance as the last of its kind in our community, and it is important that we all work together to preserve the existing historical structures in our region and strengthening our communities. And just lastly, I want to touch on the fact that our council, the Council for Uptown Partners, is actually talking with council for the owners regarding the importance of preserving this historic site and to resolve the historic designation for the Tito House, and thank you all, you know, for your time and consideration.
You. Our next registered speaker is David Rodenstein. Hope I said that correctly.
Thank you. For the record, my name is David Rodenstein, and I live at 311 Pasadena Drive in Fox Chapel. I'm the author of the nomination report, and I was retained by Uptown Partners as their historic preservation consultant to research and prepare the nomination for this property. You have a more complete written testimony in your packet, and I would encourage you to read it, as well as the complete nomination report. I don't want to rehash what was stated during the staff report. I do want to underscore the fact that my research found that the property meets at least seven, perhaps eight, of the city's designation criteria. The first one is it served as Joe Tito's home place of business. He controlled his bootlegging numbers and numbers gambling and other activities associated with Pittsburgh's informal economies from this site. He also, in the early years of Latrobe Brewing, after prohibition, ran the business from the house while the brewery itself was located in Ligonier. The second criterion is Joe Tito himself is a historically significant individual in Pittsburgh's history, both for his involvement with the city's important organized crime history, industrial history, beer brewing, and of course, perhaps even more significantly, for his role in Negro Leagues baseball as an owner officer of the Pittsburgh Crawfords. He was a longtime friend of Gus Greenley. They were business partners, and the family has recounted many episodes of Negro Leagues team members at the property. The third criterion involves the architecture, as you heard the preservation planner. It's an example of Queen Anne architecture. There's no argument there. The fourth criterion that I found it significant under is it's the work of, it's the location of important or cultural aspects significant in Pittsburgh regional and national history, again, because of social, historical ties, immigrant history, black history, economic history, and sports history. It also represents a pattern of neighborhood development during the late 19th century. This part of Fifth Avenue gradually built out with upper-middle-class families. This is the last surviving domestic residents in that stretch. It represents a cultural, historical, architectural, or related theme expressed through distinctive areas. This means that it's related to other landmark properties in the city of Pittsburgh that represent a theme that includes the Guckenheim alcohol warehouse, the Crawford Grill Number Two, National Negro Opera Company House, and other properties. Finally, it's a distinctive visual site in the Fifth Avenue corridor. Also in your packet, you have letters from internationally renowned scholars in black history, sports history, Pittsburgh history, historic preservation, and other fields that support my research, that found it sound, well-supported, and recommending that you vote for designation. Thank you, and I'm willing to take your questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Patrick Riga.
My name is Patrick Riga. I appear here today on behalf of the current owners of what is labeled as the Tito property, located at 1817 Fifth Avenue. Specifically, I represent Nicole McGuire and her brother James McGuire. They are the sole heirs of the original owners of this property, James McGuire and his wife Sandra McGuire. James McGuire passed in 2014. His wife Sandra passed in 2019, and only at that time did the McGuire children learn that their parents owned this property. At that time, they immediately took steps to assess the condition of the property and address any concerns regarding its condition. As has been described already, the property was determined to be unsound. In fact, if council reviews the Allegheny County assessment records, it is in fact characterized as unsound. With that understanding, the McGuire children, the, again, current owners, determined that it would be in their best interest to petition and apply for a demolition permit from the city, which they applied for. What they did not understand at the time is that there were pending conservatorship proceedings because they had never received service under that proceeding. Once they learned of the conservatorship proceeding, they appeared before the court. The court requested that they withhold moving forward with the demolition. Subsequent to that, the nomination for historic landmark designation was filed. To state it briefly at this point, the Maguires, and I believe council will hear from Nicole McGuire today on behalf of her family, they support the decision of the Historic Review Commission in providing a negative recommendation, as Ms. Quinn indicated. With that said, the McGuire family also entered into an agreement for sale of this property to a developer, which interestingly was the plan, the very plan that the conservator put forward to try to address the condition and circumstances of the property. At this point, the McGuire family believes and holds to the view that as the owners of the property, they should be in a position to determine its history. I will just close by saying they are not insensitive to the community interests, and I would like to confirm Dr. McDonald's comment. We are engaged with Uptown Partners Council, and we request some opportunity to continue those discussions in an effort to resolve any outstanding issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sabrina Miller, followed by Clarence Steiner.
Hi, Sabrina Miller. I'm the Real Estate and Development Manager with Uptown Partners of Pittsburgh. My address is 89 Sumner in Bellevue Borough. So we advocate for the historic designation of Uptown's historic Tito Meccasizza House, as its preservation is imperative to a neighborhood that is both deteriorating culturally and also experiencing rapid and valued development. Neighborhoods across the city of Pittsburgh can relate to that. When these places are gone, demolished or forgotten because the history isn't preserved, also gone is the stories of the families, the values, the triumphs, and the mishaps that make Pittsburgh unique. We lose once recognizable but likely forgotten intrinsic nature of our neighborhoods, and so it's our goal to see that the Tito Meccasizza House and the garage be designated and restored by the community in which it exists. As researched and expressed by Dr. Rodenstein, and unanimously determined by the Planning Commission, we believe the property to be historic based on the criterion, seven out of 10, where only one out of 10 is necessary. Uptown is a neighborhood under development, consistent development, as you can see if you travel Fifth and Forbes through our neighborhood. Through this designation, we seek to preserve some semblance of the unique architecture and history only exemplified by an existing structure as Uptown grows and changes. This endeavor also aligns directly with the $2 million city-backed Eco Innovation District Plan, co-sponsored and co-authored by the city, in which it discusses how preservation is important, and building on the unique architecture and character flows into upholding the identity of these neighborhoods that are under development. Through education and advocacy, we were able to tell the story of the home that people have recognized for decades as they drive down Fifth Avenue, and during this period, I also had the honor to meet and get to know the Tito Meccasizza family who still live in and around Pittsburgh and also across the country, albeit a personal experience, understanding their experiences in the day-to-day life in and around the home added a rare component to what value actually means, in addition to the criterion laid out for what it means to be historically, a historic site in the city of Pittsburgh. And so I look forward to you all getting a chance to hear from them today, and I hope that you take the community's perspective into place, as we are the ones who live and work in and for these communities. We also had, I mean, we had a very, I think it's a shared and common, but difficult experience navigating this whole designation process. One that we thought was clearly laid out did not turn out to be the case, but we navigated the process as best as we could, and so we hope that we, we hope that we have been able to convey our perspective. We provided a very and extremely comprehensive report that we think clearly shows that this property is historic, and we're advocating to have some piece of the fabric in Uptown acknowledged and preserved as we continue to grow and develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clarence Steiner, followed by Jane McNutt.
My name is Clarence. My nickname Casey Steiner. I represent the owners of the Fifth Avenue School Lofts located 1800 Fifth Avenue, across the street from the Tito House. I live at 120 Beet Street, Pittsburgh, 15218. And for the record, Dr. McDonald states that she's a resident of our building, and just for the record, she moved out in March, so I don't know if she's a Pittsburgh resident now or not. We renovated the deteriorated school building in 2010 into 65 loft apartments. In the past 12 years, we have watched the Tito House property sit vacant and deteriorating, a blight on the community. The property has only been used for prostitutes and drug deals, which I have personally witnessed. I am against granting historic status to the property, and I am in favor of the approval of the planned development for the following reasons. The project complies with the stringent Eco Innovation District zoning that the Uptown Partners and other stakeholders in Uptown created to benefit the area. To argue that this development is displacing people is a red herring, since there are no legal residents in the plots currently. This is not gentrification, but rather sensible and much-needed infill development. The development would complement the extensive and expensive bus rapid transit project to the benefit of both. What better way to reduce energy consumption than to have city-based housing directly on a rapid transit bus route? It would provide much-needed housing, including a portion of affordable housing, which was a goal of the Eco Innovation District. The project obviously would add tax revenues, both real estate and income tax, to the city, as well as enhancing value of other properties in the area. The project would reduce crime in the area by eliminating the use of the property and the back alley for illegal purposes. The project promises to provide much-needed amenities to the area with first-floor retail space. Finally, the project would achieve high- Finally, the project would achieve highest and best use of the land, a goal that should be a goal for all zoning plans. Indeed, Uptown used to be a densely populated area before many of the houses were turned down and converted to parking lots. This project would help restore the area to its historic nature of a densely populated area. The historic designation report does a wonderful job recording the history of the family and the property. Let's provide the History Center with this report and erect a plaque on Fifth Avenue to mark the Tito House location. In the meantime, let's provide necessary housing for Pittsburgh, maximize the effective use of the new BRT corridor. Let's provide amenities to the residents of the area, which is currently a food and shopping desert. Let's add tax revenue to the city to allow municipal services in the future, to allow the historic designation of this house to get in the way of.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jane McNutt. Currently on mute, Jane.
Okay, can you hear me now? Thanks. Good afternoon. My name is Jane McNutt. I live at nineteen forty Fifth Avenue. I'm a former longtime director of Uptown Partners, as many of you might know. And previously, I was the Community's Chair of Housing and Economic Development. I was a resident for sixteen years, and I'm also a former board member of Preservation Pittsburgh. And I did write something up. I see I've got a lot of things that others have said, so I'll try to cherry pick some things. But like six hundred other, others who have signed a nomination petition, I support the city historic site designation of these two properties. The well-researched history of the properties speak for themselves. I urge you to take time to read Uptown Partners' nomination form. The birthplace of the iconic Rolling Rock beer has to be reason to long for passage. As David Rotenstein mentioned, numerous renowned historians have supported this nomination, including University of Pittsburgh's Larry Glasgow, leading authority on Black Pittsburgh history, who applauds the Tito partnership with Hill entrepreneur Gus Greenlee and their significant contribution to African-American life. Rob Rook, a professor of sports history, also recognizes the Tito legacy in building the nation's first black-owned professional baseball stadium and supporting role of the Pittsburgh Crawford, it's one of our two Negro League teams in the thirties. Melissa Marinara, Director of Italian-American Program at Heinz History Center, says that nationally distributed Rolling Rock beer is a successful immigrant effort to integrate themselves into the American marketplace. Please read their compelling letters as well. In the last century, the underground economy of numbers gambling and bootlegging was ubiquitous in the region, especially the Hill District. It was an opportunity for multiracial immigrants to support their families when traditional resources were unreachable. Parlaying illegal winnings, big fortunes were allegedly also made by a few notable Pittsburghers, from mayors to major league sport team owners, which is to say that bootlegging and gambling is a colorful and deeply unrepresented facet of our city's history. Counsel's vote should be exclusively made on the merits of the city's historic indicators. This should not be a discussion of whether hypothetical proposed development is irrational for defeating designation, nor whether the Tito Home is economically viable. Planning Commission got it right in unanimously approving designation, as did the Historic Review Commission Preservation Planner, Ms. Sarah Quinn, and HRC Committee Chair. I have serious concerns, however, about the flawed procedure and lack of professional standards evident at our HRC hearing, and hope the city will make critical adjustments to ensure that future hearings are fair. Over the past fifteen years, Uptown has worked with the city, as Sabrina has mentioned, to discourage unnecessary demolition, jointly establishing a demolition moratorium through the Eco District Plan, while encouraging thoughtful development. Note that the Eco District Plan is the city's first adopted community-driven plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rona Peckich, followed by Jonathan Clayton.
Hi. Got it. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Rona L. Peckich, and I live at three four two five zero Sunset Way, Fort Bragg, Mendocino, California. I am testifying today on behalf of myself and my family, the Tito Meccas as a families, with complete and unwavering support of preservation for this site. I was going to read a long dissertation about all the wonderful things that have happened in the property and all those things. But I think that it's all there for you to read, and I think you're hearing a lot of it. What I'd like to comment mostly, and I think to me is the most important thing. My great-grandmother, who lived in that house, she will be passed away. It'll be fifty years in nineteen seventy, this July, nineteen seventy-two. And since that time, this property has done nothing but deteriorate. It has become an horrific eyesore for the community. It is an embarrassment for, for myself as a family member that once remembered the gorgeous house that contributed to that area. So for me, the most important thing to state is the idea that property owners are given a voice in this process is completely valid and warranted. However, in this case, these specific owners did nothing to upkeep the property. What they undeniably did was allow this beautiful tiny lot in Uptown to become an embarrassment for the area, as well as for local drug use, prostitution, homeless and other seedy activities, all while knowing they could just sit back for decades, continuing, continuing to neglect until someone came along to offer an inflated value for the land. Aside from that, they also did not pay property taxes for years at a time or at all. These owners should not be rewarded. This is exactly why areas become so run down, blighted and unlivable. And to add complete insult to injuries, these same owners who completely neglected the property are permitted to oppose anything being done other than them cashing in. This needs to stop. Pittsburgh is too special to continue this community decline by proxy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Clayton, followed by Francois Bits.
Hello. My name is John Clayton, twenty-six twenty-six Cole Avenue, Dallas, Texas, seven five two oh four. I'm a representative of Fountain Residential Partners. We're a multifamily developer who has this property plus another twenty-one lots over there under contract purchase for potential redevelopment. We're a multifamily property with about two hundred and seventy units and eleven thousand square feet of retail space. This would be an eighty-nine million dollar project, given today's current construction cost environment. It'll go up, it'll go down. But that is what we're planning and would like to say that this is a piece of land with this house on it. It's a very important piece of our overall development. And, you know, we have taken the new Eco Innovation District guidelines into account in designing a new project. Feel like we will be hitting all the tenants of that and taking the neighborhood character into account as we bring a nice new development to the neighborhood. Something that'll increase the tax base by about tenfold or more, give it its current values and, excuse me. Sorry. Sorry, just lost my, lost my place there. I apologize. But we do understand the criticisms and the needs and wants of the neighborhood and have started some meaningful dialogue with them. Look forward to, in the future, working with them to bring about a great development for the neighborhood. And hopefully we'll have the time to do that here. But as things currently stand, we do stand opposed to designating these parcels as historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Francois Bits.
Yes. Can you hear me? Oh, I just, a property owner at twenty eighteen and five other parcels, a few blocks uptown. I'm against the designation. I've been following the saga of this nomination with the ups and downs. And I strongly oppose glorifying a mobster and murderer or whatever, allegedly, just for historical designation purposes. So I'm opposed, and that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. That has, brings us Eric Vandenstindel. I apologize if I mispronounced that. And then Nicole McGuire.
Thank you. My name's Eric Van Estendal. I am a community development consultant, and I have been adjacent to both conservatorship actions in this city and historic nomination actions in the city. And I want to speak to a number of things that were actually stated during this testimony that I believe City Council deserves to have clarification on. The conservatorship basically was filed over two years ago, during, during which in June of two thousand and twenty-one, the respondents who are opposing this nomination entered their appearance. They filed an incomplete, as of this date, demolition permit in July of two thousand and twenty-one, which means they were not willing to negotiate a potential agreement that would be mutually beneficial with Uptown Partners and any other potential developers. The historic nomination is but one key procedural component of a future redevelopment, which can include historic tax credits and otherwise bring back this property in an economically viable way. The, I presume that Fountain Real Estate Partners, apologize if I missed their name, need to understand that with the Eco Innovation District and the zoning development review process, which they applied for in September of twenty-one, so many years ago, and it is still incomplete as of this date with revisions requested in October twenty-one. I think they need to understand that Uptown Partners has a great deal of say in the successful viability of whatever is approved on that site, which as of this date, seen on Civic Central and One Stop PGH, is merely two buildings, five and six stories with a central plaza. That's about it. I see on Fountain Partners' website that they have participated in mostly campus development for universities. There is some discussion of affordability at an Amherst, Massachusetts development. It is not clear if this development in Pittsburgh incorporates any of those components. I think it's very important that everybody on this call realize that everybody can win in this situation. Public court documents have stated that this parcel is for sale, under contract, rather, for five hundred, five thousand, four hundred dollars. That is an entirely reasonable amount that the owners could receive if a better and more considerate developer came to Uptown and did something for the community instead of for their pocketbooks, which is an interesting dialogue to hear about because that is ultimately what owners' rights come down to. Fighting against the idea that people deserve to make money should not be part of a dialogue about saving historic community assets that we do not have in the city due to a lot of issues with the historic nomination process and how the Department of City Planning and PLI and the Historic Review Commission seem to, without elected representation, dictate the shape and future of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Nicole McGuire.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just want to say very briefly that I'm kind of speaking from a very emotional place, but I want to say this. My brother and I are the new owners of the property. We inherited the property when my parents died. We just lost my mom at the very end of twenty nineteen. It was December of twenty nineteen. If you know, right after that, the pandemic hit. So as soon as my brother and I, we became aware of the property. We did whatever we could to rehab it. We did run into some conflict because, again, like I said, the pandemic hit at that time. But we are very much against this nomination, and we agree with the Historical Society that this property is not, should not go up for historic nomination. I want to say this too. My family is very much against the history of the Tito family. And as an African-American family, the discrimination that the family put on other people, we are very much against that. So we are very much against this nomination. Again, like I said, I lost my, my father in twenty fourteen. My mom passed in twenty nineteen. My brother and I have done what we can to rehab this property. One of the efforts that we got is that we did find a buyer for this property. The buyer is a developer, and that developer will bring in something good to the, to the, to the neighborhood. It'll have housing and employment. So we think this is a good thing. It's not that we did this for money. We did this because we think this is good for the area. At the Planning Commission, one of the, one of the commissioners said that we are not part of the community. My family have, and I have, lived in Pittsburgh off and on since the seventies. So my parents actually wanted to see this neighborhood brought back to its former glory. My parents had actually wanted to retire in this area. So we are very much for the development of this area and making it, bringing it back to its former glory. So again, I just, I'm very much against this nomination. And I think that it's something good can come of this, other than restoring this house. So I apologize if I'm a little shaky. Like I said, I'm coming from a very emotional basis, but we're very much against this. And I just thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zolin Cook. Let's see, Zolin online. That takes us to Thomas M. Castello.
Thank you, Members of Council. My name is Thomas Castello. My law office is at twenty Fieldstone Drive, Pittsburgh, PA one five two two oh. And I represent the Williams family. The Williams family purchased this property back in two thousand and seven. And at no time from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty-one did anyone request anything dealing with an historical designation of their property, which is eighteen eleven Caldwell Street. It is an old storage warehouse, about twenty-seven hundred square feet. Now, the City Historic Commission, which presumably has been charged with reviewing these applications and supposedly has the expertise to evaluate these applications, refused to recommend this on a vote of eight to one. That is significant, since by their vote, the commission has disagreed strongly with the presentation that was given today on behalf of the presenters. Nothing was said about this property until the Williams entered into a contract, a multimillion-dollar contract for the sale of their property, which includes Caldwell Street and eighteen other vacant lots. The Williams family is not a nominator for this designation. They were never asked to participate in it and were merely informed by a letter they received by Uptown Partners in September of two thousand and twenty-one, or six months after entering into the agreement. And the Williams family vigorously objects to the taking of their property, which they lawfully purchased fifteen years ago. Furthermore, my clients, who are of Italian descent, seriously question the glorifying of Mr. Tito, who was alleged to develop and sustain his business through violence and intimidation. My clients submit that Mr. Tito is not the kind of individual we should be glorifying, given his violent past, and especially at the time, same time that the city of Pittsburgh is covering and removing statutes of Christopher Columbus. They strongly disagree with the characterization that the Tito family is well-known with Rolling Rock. Instead, if you Google Mr. Tito's name, you will find what comes up is a story of a hit that occurred down near Market Square when he was involved with getting rid of one of his competitors by the name of John Volpe. Says nothing about Rolling Rock. It says everything about the kind of man this Mr. Tito was. This proposed development, which will not go forward without eighteen eleven Caldwell being included, will greatly enhance the local community and beautify it from what it is now. The choice is either a haven of drugs, blight, prostitution and crime, or a beautiful complex for med ed residents with a well-needed grocery store. My clients hope that you will not take their property away from them as the King of England did many, many, many years ago to the English people, which in part resulted in the English people fleeing England and coming to this great country. The ownership of the property is the foundation of our great country. And my clients hope that you will not defeat their interests by taking their property away from them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Felix, followed by Susan Monteverde. Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Felix, followed by Susan Monteverde.
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Yes, my name's Patrick Felix. I'm going to echo everything that Tom Castello just said. I'm also an attorney. My office is at 213 East Main Street, Carnegie, Pennsylvania, 15106. I'm the estate planning attorney for the Williams family. The property was transferred before Mr. Williams passed away in November into a trust, in which Miss Monteverde is now the trustee on behalf of the family. So on behalf of the family, I just want to echo what Mr. Castello said. We vehemently oppose the nomination and really beseech that the council allow owners to proceed with this development, which will only enhance the community and be of a benefit to the city of Pittsburgh overall. Thank you.
Very much. Our next speaker is Susan Monteverde, followed by Irene Montiverde.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hi. My name is Susie Williams-Monteverde, and I oppose this historic nomination. I was raised with my grandmother on the 1900 block of Fifth Avenue, and the only thing you could depend on is change. And that whole block, all those, those two blocks need to change. And when the Fountain deal goes through, it'll bring much revenue to the city, plus the taxes that they'll have to pay. And to restore the McGuire House will cost over $3 million. Thank you very much. I oppose the historic nomination.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Irene Monteverde, followed by Carol Scalo. Nor do I see Carol Scalo with us. Our next speaker then is Sunny Williams. Sunny Williams, you're currently on mute. There you go. You just, you went back on mute. Hello, I'm mute, Sunny.
Hello, am I on?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Sunny Williams. I reside at 25 Greenview Drive, Carnegie, Pennsylvania. And I would just like to echo our attorney, Tom Castello, sentiments about the properties and everything he said, along with my sister, Susie Monteverde. And just to say, I oppose the nomination for historical. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Fleenor.
Thanks for the council for letting me speak, having this forum. My name is John Fleenor. I live, I'm a resident of Uptown 312 Gist Street, Pittsburgh, 15219. I support the designation of these two buildings. There's a story behind it is interesting, I think. I never knew anything about the story behind the buildings. But since I'm considered a newcomer in the neighborhood, that's fine. I've only lived there for about 20 years. I've seen many buildings in Uptown torn down needlessly in the 20 years I've been here. The Fifth Avenue building has a great feel. It's, my kids call it the haunted house. It is a landmark in the city and in the neighborhood. I'm a inspector, a certified home inspector in Pittsburgh. I've inspected thousands of buildings in the neighborhood, I mean, in the, in the city, including ones for the URA and for the Housing Authority. And I can say that this building is completely structurally sound, and it is completely viable to renovate. In fact, it would be really easy to sell. I know a building on Fifth Avenue that sold that was completely gutted and needed everything and had major structural issues, and it sold for a good amount. So I think it's just a matter of finding someone who wants to renovate it, and it shouldn't be hard. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Helen Perloo. Carol Lou?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Helen Perloo. I reside at 312 Gist Street, Uptown Pittsburgh. Where I live is a couple of blocks from the properties in question. I am on this call, this meeting today, to voice my support of the historic nomination. My reasons are because Uptown has lost a large, a vast majority of its single-family housing over the past, oh, 15 years or so. I moved to the neighborhood in 2008. Since that time, more than three dozen single-family homes were demolished. And then we got the Eco Innovation District legislation, which put more or less a stop to that. And much of what was demolished was replaced with just vacant lots or parking lots, and all of, all of them are blighted. So getting, losing more single-family housing is not a great thing. To have a community, to have a neighborhood, you need to have people who live in homes, who know each other. And the fabric of Uptown is stretched really thin right now, because we've lost so much. I'm not opposed to new development, to new buildings, to large buildings, to the type of properties that Fountain is proposing. But the fact is, we have a ton, a ton, many, many empty parcels upon which they can build. That's not the only set of parcels in the neighborhood. There's no lack of opportunity for that type of development to be put back in. And, you know, in, over the course of the time I've lived here, many, many people I know have tried to reach out to the deceased owners of the house to see if they would sell. I spoke, I myself spoke with Mrs. McGuire twice over the course of years before she passed, and, you know, asked her to, to take care of the house and asked her if she wanted me to help her find someone to buy it. And she, she didn't really want to converse about it, and she didn't give me any indication that she was planning to move back here. But, you know, maybe, maybe that's true. I don't know. In any case, it's, it's an interesting, remarkable property that can be saved and would really contribute to having something historic in the neighborhood, because we've lost so much. We have so little to cling to, so little that's left. And it still provides an opportunity for other types of development and new construction in many other locations. So I'm heartened, you know, if we can all work together to find a reasonable solution to this. But for now, I do support the historic designation, and I hope that we can all find a good, good endpoint to this. And I do ask for council support in this. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Our last two registered speakers are Dev Myers. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Dev Myers with Remax Realty Brokers. I live in the Lower Hill, but for the record, I'm going to give you my office address, 5608 Wilkins Avenue in Pittsburgh. I represent both the buyer and the sellers in the real estate transaction that will be blocked if the historic designation is approved. The proposed development will be really good for Pittsburgh and for the Uptown neighborhood, bringing property taxes, wage taxes, and transfer taxes to the city treasury and jobs and amenities to the neighborhood in the retail space. The BRT is receiving federal funding because it is intended to serve a high-density urban corridor. Some Uptown residents may prefer to have small, single-family dwellings be built in that location, yet developers are unwilling to pay the asking price if that's all they can build there. The retail space in the development will house amenities that the neighborhood begs for, such as a grocery store and a cafe. A blighted section of Fifth Avenue will be cleaned up and revitalized. Riders on the BRT will see that Pittsburgh is moving forward and that progress is taking place. Our local roads and bridges are in epic disrepair, and the city lacks the money to repair our infrastructure. Taxes that Pittsburgh will collect from this development are direly needed. I also have to disagree with John Fleenor. In your file, you'll see a report from Chip Desmond. He was at both properties together with PJ Dick, and they found the property to be unsound. They have submitted a total spreadsheet of all the costs that it will be to bring it together, to make it a criminal museum, and it looks like it's about three and a half million just to start with. I hold, I also want to talk about the history and historic nomination. I hold a degree in American history from George Washington University, and I understand that historic designations are subjective, meaning that they place excessive emphasis on moods and on attitudes and on opinions. For example, a child will be taught Civil War history with an emphasis or a bias depending on the geographical location of the school district. Examples of our local subjective historical designations are, of course, the recent racial issues with the Columbus statue. Bouquet Street in Oakland, at Panther Hollow, General Bouquet committed the first biological warfare in North America when he gave smallpox blankets to Native Americans.
Time is in the, thank you. You can submit your testimony to the clerk if you'd like us to read it up in its entirety. That'll be fine. Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Chris Grimm.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Yes, my name is Chris Grimm. I live at 6923 Thomas Boulevard in Pittsburgh. I'm the CEO of Weapon X Development, and we specialize in fixing a lot of blighted houses such as this one. And we are, we are for it being designated a historical house, because if you just think about it, I mean, we can't have a, we can't have a lot of, we have to keep the structures as they are. Like, you know, you go through the city, Pittsburgh, we're a neighborhood city. Each city has its own unique, you know, niches in it in preserving little parts of it, like this house with, you know, kind of distinguish Uptown from the rest. If we put a lot of five-by-10 buildings everywhere, everything's going to look the same, and the neighborhoods will be the same. Now, regardless of whether you agree with the historic past of this man or not, his end result is undeniable, the fact that, you know, he helped contribute to the Negro League in Crawford, which is, the Crawford Grays are a big part of Pittsburgh's history, and if you lived here, you would know that. And let's, let's not forget that Carnegie and Frick also had a few, few bad, few bad days in their past, but yet we still, you know, have monuments, and, you know, they contributed a lot to the city, and there's a lot of history there for them. We can't just have plaques, you know, to represent structures, because, you know, we could, we could develop, you know, four pit and put a plaque there. You know, I'm sure there's developers that would like to do that, but we got to keep history of this city. You know, this, this house meets a lot of the criteria. The Planning Commission was unanimous on it, and the last building that we designated in East Liberty, they were actually split on it, and it's still got designated as historic. So I believe that there's precedent here that this should be nominated, and it just, it's just something that we need to preserve in the city. There's plenty, we're, we're working a lot with the blight in Uptown, and there's plenty of places for them to put their student housing. So, and I don't even know if this is an ideal area for that, but that all should not matter. It's just a matter that this house should be preserved as it is, and it can be preserved. And, because I've done worst houses and that, and PJ Dick does not know that, because I know him, and he develops large structures like the development they'd like to do. So I feel like he's going to err on that side whenever he decides what should be built and what can't be fixed. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you guys do the right thing.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers or online wishing to speak? If you're online, please raise your hand. You will be acknowledged. If you're in chambers, please come forward. Write your name and neighborhood. For the record, you'll be given one minute to speak.
Okay, my name is Donna Brusco. My grandmother was Anna Tito Mecca Zizza. I just want to tell you, it's more about the historic beauty of this house, the preservation. But I have to say something. Since I've been through the, what do you call it, the Historic Review Board, I never experienced so much anti-Italianism in my life. And people who throw out, like, bad stories about my great uncle never knew them. And certain things, at that time, Italian-Americans were just pulled in on everything. We weren't welcomed in this community. And the reason about, I know what they're talking about. My uncle paid for some man who was killed haircut two hours before. So they questioned every Italian-American man. So I don't like things like the Christopher Columbus statue brought into this. I was there when they unveiled it. That wasn't a city thing. That was the ISDA and the Italian Columbus. So it's just too much insult that I've taken. My grandmother was a lovely woman. She kept a beautiful home. It was in perfect shape. It was sold after, she, she didn't leave when everybody else, but she passed there. She loved that house. Even when the National Guard was on her front porch, when the riots, I couldn't, we couldn't get her out of her house. Just wanted on record.
Very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Melissa McSwigan, 4131 Bigelow, 15213. I really wanted to show up today for Uptown Partners and hope that City Council will also show up for them as well. I know the process hasn't been easy for them. From my experience doing local nominations, the process isn't easy, and so people don't submit these nominations for local designation just willy-nilly. You know, as it has been said, this building is really the last of its kind in the neighborhood, where there have been so many tear downs, neglect, speculative mothballing. You know, I hope that you will support Uptown Partners and their efforts to build a livable and healthy community in their Eco Innovation District. You know, the house on Fifth Avenue has been an issue for Uptown Partners for many years, given the neglect by the owners. And also, you know, this is not, okay, I will, I think I'm all done, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers in council or online? Seeing none, I'll simply say, one of the last speakers mentioned that hopefully there could be some compromise. I do know and understand that the lawyers from both sides of this are in conversations, and I also wish that hopefully compromise can be reached therefore this body is not forced to choose between the wishes of owners and the wishes of many within a community. With that, this hearing adjourned.